Came to us, we thought it's better to postpone it till the next meeting and then we can have, all have a chance to look at the letter and then do that if that's agreeable.
Oh yeah, first of all, I just got from Sue today also some edits for it.
Okay, okay.
There wasn't edits that were allowed to be done to it, so I changed it back. I hadn't seen that Wendy had converted it because you don't want to link it to a website. I was converting it into a PDF so that could be posted, so the edits can be made on it.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda with that?
Tom, can you hang on a second?
Sure. Okay.
Okay, Tom.
Are we okay?
We'll find out in two shakes. Go ahead, Tom.
So with that deletion, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. All in favor? Seven in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment, I don't see anybody out there. Okay, so we move to the main order of business, so Dr. Morse.
So thank you, Tom. As you know, the governor's order came out on Thursday, but we never got a hard copy until almost three-quarters of the way through Friday. And I was waiting for the hard copy because I was getting a lot of questions from the community. Obviously, people who are in a remote setting were the most panicked because they were, you know, working off the news feed, and the news feed, of course, is general in nature. And so I just, the first thing I want to assure the community is that the governor's order does allow for families that have chosen a remote option to continue in that option. So the question has come up in relation to the governor's order as its legal standing. And so the answer is, I've talked to two lawyers and two executive directors in the state today, and everybody's consensus is that they feel like the governor is, executive order is an overreach. However, that's everybody's opinion. In order for their opinion to become fact, the executive order would have to be challenged in Superior Court, and we'd have to win. So if we didn't win, then it would have to be appealed to the State Supreme Court. The executive director of New Hampshire School Boards Association, Barrett Christina, shared with me as we were talking about this, and Barrett is also a lawyer in addition to being the executive director of your organization, that the executive orders of the governor have been challenged at least three times. One of those times was by the churches in the state where they felt like he had done an overreach in putting restrictions on church assemblies. They did challenge it, they lost. So right now, the governor has won every challenge to his authority on executive orders. That authority comes from a 2002 state law, and that was challenged in court and was upheld. So, you know, and then the last question I was asked was, is there any organized effort to resist the governor's order? And the answer to that is no. The statewide organizations had a discussion about it. They looked at the track record in terms of the court cases, and they felt that by the time the case managed to work its way through the legal system, the school year will be over, and there is no appetite for an organized, coordinated effort to challenge the governor's order. So although we all can have our own opinions about it, until it is a court action, they are just our opinions. And so the governor's order stands unless a court says differently. So I'd be glad to answer any questions the school board has. I may not know all the answers, but I certainly talked to enough lawyers today.
So I had heard on one news, I think it was WMUR, that the Dover School District appealed the date. They just said, hey, we already had a plan in place to start in school on March 15th. Can we stick with that? And they were told they could. So I guess my question is, if we feel that March 8th is too soon, we're not going to have, I think you had mentioned the PPE and other things that we need, staff, trying to hire somebody in a week, is there a way that we could ask for an extension?
Thanks, Denise. So I talked to the Commissioner of Education on Friday.
Back to the library.
I won't be sad when we start a new school year and we're all in. This is... I hope not. Hope we start in the fall.
I got it now.
Is it working now?
Yeah, yours is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Do I need to repeat what I asked?
No, I'll do it in my answer. So Denise had asked about an appeal process. She had heard that Dover had had an extension to the 15th. And so I talked to the commissioner about appeal processes on Friday afternoon when I finally got the hard copy. And his response to me was that the governor is steadfast on the 8th. He wants people open two days a week on the 8th. That's what he, that is what his executive order says, and that's what he wants. So I said, okay, commissioner, so that's what the governor wants, is their appeal process. And he said, yes, you could appeal, but you're going to have to have an incredibly powerful reason as to why you can't do it by the 8th. And I said, okay, so that's what I'll share. So there's a great resistance in the executive branch to changing the date. Does it mean it's impossible? No, but you're going to have to have a compelling reason for them to even consider it.
If you don't have the staff hired to be able to have the staff, to be able to, you know, have the kids have, be supervised appropriately, do you think that that would be a good enough reason?
I think that's one reason we could put in a letter asking if we can, you know, wait, and then what the date is that you want to wait till. So, you know, part, you'll see in Jay's presentation tonight, there's a staffing requirement and a request, so. UC?
For executive orders generally, how are they enforced? What is the penalty for noncompliance? And you were just speaking of an appeal, but are there requests for variance or what is, what is the appeal process generally beyond this particular question of extending the date?
So a letter directly to the commissioner, and then the commissioner would, I assume, consult with the governor. There's no formal appeal process where, you know, people have some kind of template that they're filling out. And what was the other part of your question?
How is it enforced, and what are the penalties for noncompliance?
Sure. Well, I would say that enforcement is based on compliance by the state school systems. And in terms of penalty, the only penalty the state has is pretty significant, which is withholding state funding. I don't see that as written into the executive order, but I'm sure that that would come up really fast. I know that about two months ago, Exeter was doing something in statewide testing, and they had decided they weren't going to do statewide testing, and they had a meeting with the state, and the state, and they changed their mind really fast. So, you know, we live in a nation of laws. The governor has created this executive order. It stands until challenged as law, so I would, I would not want us to get into a civil disobedience piece because we disagree with something. If it was about human rights, I would absolutely want to get into a situation of civil disobedience, but I don't think that this rises to that level.
And what is the process for challenging in court? What is the, what would be the cost, if only till the end of the school year?
Would be an extraordinary cost for us to do that by ourselves.
By ourselves.
Yeah. And as I said, I didn't, I don't see any taste in the state for, you know, co-joining and trying to challenge it, so it would be, it would rely totally on us.
Thank you. I asked just to get a sense of, you know, the universe of options that we have.
Sure, absolutely.
Other questions about the order itself? So we ready to move to the presentation?
Yeah. I'd say, as Jay gets up to speak, I just, I want to take the time to really thank Jay and his staff. I mean, clearly, the order was issued on Friday, the written order. And so for Jay, what Jay has done is he's resurrected a proposal that you've seen, you saw in December, and modified it to fit the governor's executive order. I would add that since then, we've done a couple of reports that are going to be very timely in relation to PD for the staff. And so I really want to thank Jay because this was a vacation week for him, just like it was for his teachers, and in order to produce what you're seeing tonight, he had to work through the weekend and, you know, tap into his staff to work and to make sure the proposal you're seeing is thoughtful and thorough. So thank you, Jay, publicly for, you know, giving up vacation time and weekends to get here. And the board was sent your material yesterday, but I think it's really important for the public in this presentation, so not only are you talking to the board, but there are a lot of people who are interested in how we're going to meet the governor's order, so just take your time and go through it, and the board will have questions afterwards, I'm sure.
Great, I'm glad to be here. This is what principals do. Just before I get started, I just want to highlight in terms of how things have gone well, in terms of the one-day model, things have been really seamless. It's great to have the kids back in one full day per week. Some of the fears or, you know, concerns about what the cafeteria, et cetera, would look like, but I just want to share that with you. Things have gone very, very well, and a lot of smiling faces from students. And another thing, too, is just, you know, staff getting to see each other more frequently again, which has been a very positive thing. Again, just responding to the governor's order. I almost chuckled a little bit when UC asked that question. I had this vision of me maybe them coming down and putting me in handcuffs. I don't think that's going to happen. But again, the order is clear that, you know, we would move to two days per week. I do also want to highlight that we do have students in the building already at least three days a week. So this new model would, of course, include grade five. That would be one of the biggest changes because grade five currently is in on Wednesdays on an AM PM model where the other grade levels are in one full day per week. So that would be, you know, I would consider a very significant change in terms of grade five. Another thing that I would really like to see is with, you know, move to a different model with the two days, is continuing our targeted learners. I think that's very, very effective, as well as we need to look at targeted learning a little bit differently for Wednesdays, particularly with our special education population and other targeted learners and their needs. This model, of course, the two-day model, it would continue to allow access for our remote learners to our teachers during the week. This is, you know, what essentially what a weekly schedule would look like for students is, you know, really a kind of a big decision is one that I prefer. Essentially, we could have students come in A through K, Mondays and Tuesdays, and then L through Z on Thursdays and Fridays. The model that I would prefer to split it up is have A through K come in on Mondays and on Thursdays, then L through Z on Tuesdays and Fridays. You know, a big component of SEL is being able to see the kids, and I really don't like the idea of, you know...
There you go, Jay.
All right, we're back. As I was explaining, again, there's two ways we can do this, you know, A through K Monday, Tuesday, L through Z on Thursdays and Fridays. Again, I would prefer to do A through K on Monday and Thursday, then L through Z on Tuesdays and Fridays. I also want to emphasize, with these types of models, when families have reached out to me due to specific needs, we listen, and of course, we always want to accommodate families to their needs. Every family's different. So again, that's just kind of a general overview.
Jay, I'm sorry, I'm reading this. This looks like grade five, A, like A to K is in on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Correct. So that's one of the biggest changes, Tom, where fifth grade would come in two days per week.
Yeah.
So this would, this is showing what it would look like, A through K on Monday and Tuesdays, grades five through eight, and then L through Z on Thursday and Friday. You can barely see it, but at the top, I said, you know, we really need to make a decision in terms of whether we would do that, or the preferred model I would like to see is, again, A through K on Mondays, grades five through eight, L through Z on Tuesdays, and then again, the same thing on Thursday and Friday to split, split things out for the students. I think that would be better for the teachers.
So the other option that is, if you switch Tuesday and Thursday?
Yeah, so this, this one you're showing is not what you would prefer, is that...
Correct. I did a bad job at the very bottom of the weekly student schedule. I just talked about how we need to spread it out, make a decision. Ideally, I would talk to my task force on Monday when we get back. My, that's a group of teachers to talk about this, but I'm confident that they would prefer, again, to split the kids up, you know, A through K, L through Z on Monday, Tuesday, and split it out that way.
Okay.
Curricularly, too, I think, you know, when we think about our curriculum, if the kids are all doing, you know, A through K is getting that content, and then the other students are getting that in-person content on Thursday and Friday, that honestly makes no sense to me.
I think I agree with that.
This is the magic middle school schedule, what that looks like. Now, grades five through eight, a lot of different colors with UA, you know, bobcat times, lunch times. That would something to be very unique, too, going to the two-person. We would have four lunch blocks per day, and I've already consulted with our facility staff about that on Friday, what that would look like. And currently, we're using the multipurpose room in the cafeteria, so when we see a grade level, we would have them in two separate locations. Again, that's gone very well for us with the one-day model. Kids have been great. Keep their ass on unless they're eating. Then we get them right outside for recess, weather permitting. In the days from 8 to, you know, 2:30. This is what an asynchronous day looks like for students. Again, a change would be, and again, with the two in-person days, students would have two to three asynchronous days. A targeted learner would have, be in the building two and a half days. So that's what that would look like. We would continue to have music and world language on the asynchronous days, so students would have a connection with some teachers on those days. And in fifth grade, we do not have world language, but they would continue to have SEL with their counselors. That's actually a model, you know, something that's worked very well and something new with this situation.
Would you prefer to wait for questions at the end, or...
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'm easygoing, Denise.
Okay.
Can handle both.
Well, maybe, it's just while the screen is on.
Yeah.
So my question is, why only music? Like, they're not going to have art or the other?
Great question. If I, they would have...
Oh, the music is...
UA art, health, those topics would be in-person in the building.
In-person, all right, got it. And music is, is remote?
Yeah, correct.
Got it, okay, I understand now.
This is what a teacher's schedule looks like for the in-person days? Teams are used to having team plan time, so one of the changes you see here is we have historically had office hours from 2:30 to 3 o'clock. This is when I would give teachers their team plan time. This is what a Wednesday student's schedule would look like. Again, with targeted learners coming in, office hours would be available for students on Wednesdays. Again, fifth and sixth grade would come in the morning. That's the, that's the current model for sixth grade. And seven and eight targeted learners in the afternoon. So five, six teachers would be available for office hours in the afternoon for students and in the morning for seventh and eighth grade students. That's what the Wednesday teacher's schedule would look like for remote students. We would continue to do UAs on Wednesdays. Here's a UA teacher's schedule, what that looks like. Again, I'll work closely with my teachers to make sure this is mapped out very well, specifically, you know, it works for our students as well as our UA teachers. Some just general questions, and I'd be glad to take as many questions as you have tonight. You know, a question that commonly comes up, you know, why haven't we had an AM PM model at some point for all the grade levels throughout the year? The biggest, we can't, we can't do it for transportation. It just will not work. You know, other scheduling pieces like an AM PM model would be extremely complicated. One of the things we're very fortunate here at Oyster River Middle School is the amount of awesome programs that we have for our students. The challenge is, is scheduling them, so. This model, like any other model, change will, you know, have a significant impact on special education in terms of those service times. We'll just have to work very closely together to make sure things work for our students, of course, and our staff. Typically, again, a middle school schedule, we do that over the summer. We give it to the staff at the beginning of the year, and that's the schedule for the year. Again, this is different times, but there will definitely be some, you know, schedule shifts and some challenges with that.
Will there be, need to be any changes of teams?
No. No? Really, it's a great question, Tom. I mean, what's going to happen is, is the current schedule we have for grades six, seven, and eight, instead of having, being in one day, students will be in for two days. Students will have more asynchronous time, though, than they do currently with a one-day. And again, you know, the shift with fifth grade, that's, you know, a big change.
What about the targeted students that are...
That's a great question, Brian. Those students will now be in, you know, two days per week, but we're going to have to work very closely and talk about that. That will be a challenge because some of those spaces where those kids are currently working are now going to be used by teachers, so.
Could I just remind the board that's being streamed, and you need to speak into your microphone? Your question's going to get lost. Thanks.
Yes, targeted learners will definitely still be on Wednesdays. Some, you know, we identify up to, you know, 30 students per team, so kids would be in. But what, Brian, the question is, we do have targeted learners at different times during the week. That would need to be different because, again, those classrooms are being used.
I understand in some, some districts, the, there are targeted learners that are simply in-person for class for all four days, for example. Do they need to be in a separate place outside of the classroom, or do you think that that would be a possibility for some of our targeted learners?
We're very limited with space in, in the building, so, you know, in any, when the kids are in, I mean, pretty much every single space, and I think I'll talk about it in a moment, but that's one of the challenges, particularly that's why it's helpful for world language to be remote. I know those world language teachers would love to be in person and be with those students, but we're using those spaces for other classroom needs right now. So that is one thing where it's helpful for the world language staff to be remote. So what we currently doing in terms of some targeted learners is we have students who do come in, get direct support from staff when their teachers are home teaching remotely. So we actually already do that model with some groups. Some groups are larger than others, but that is a model we're currently using. Again, that would need to change, moving to more in-person learning for kids.
Right, but they could be in the classroom with the teacher, teaching the in-person class.
I mean, they'll be in-person anyways.
The answer to that is yes, UC. Yeah, you're talking about integrating the regular and special needs kids. That's optimal, I think, anyway.
Yeah, we automatically do that when the kids are in person, absolutely. Sorry, UC, I wasn't sure, I wasn't following. Timeline?
Jay, can you just back up to your previous slide? You didn't go through this yet.
Oh, okay. Got off track. You know, PD time, I mean, we had two great reports that were recently completed on those committees. That is not in staff's hands yet, though it was just finalized the week before break, so that would need to be shared with staff, you know, when, right when we get back on Monday. I'm not a fan of giving or sending out staff emails over vacation. I know my staff will read this stuff, but again, I want them to enjoy their well-deserved break, so those reports are getting to the hands of staff first thing Monday, as well as, you know, whatever transpires tonight. I'm sure people will reach out to me, though. You know, PD time needs to be provided to staff in terms of, you know, just preparing for this. I mean, one week is a, is a short timeline in terms of such a significant shift. Again, I mentioned earlier, you know, we would continue to keep world language staff as well as music staff remotely, and those lessons would continue to be on the students' asynchronous days.
So Jay, I just want to emphasize for the board, one of the major recommendations from these reports that were written over the course of last month was for the middle school to shift into a integrated, theme-based or project-based approach. And it's, it's easy to miss this particular bullet, but it's critical to how the, how the staff will address asynchronous time. So the idea is to tie the asynchronous days into the days that the teachers have the students. So it's not foreign for the middle school to do theme-based, it's not foreign for them to do project-based, and it's not foreign for them to do integrated projects. But one of the things that Jay and I talked about was making sure that that concept was integrated into the, into the practice for this, for the spring, because it's going to be critical with the amount of asynchronous time that exists.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just ask a question about professional development? I think it goes back to a question Denise had, I think, when we were changing the days to the end of, end of the year, because it seems to me, and I'm just put it out there, whether it might make sense to have those two professional days for the middle school to be kind of soon, you know? Has any thought been given to that?
Yeah, I've been thinking about that, Tom, and one of my thoughts was, and again, this is a very short timeline. Ideally, give some staff some PD time to work and collaborate together when students are not in person in the building. So for example, again, this is really fast, but say for next week, we decided to provide staff with PD. Ideally, what I would do with it is when the students are not in person, okay, so like on Monday and Tuesday, I would provide professional development time for our seventh and eighth grade teachers. That way, my students would not miss out on that in-person time on Thursday and Friday. And I would do the same thing for sixth grade, because the sixth graders, again, we look forward to seeing them next Monday and Tuesday. I would provide PD time for that grade level on Thursday and Friday, because I do not want our students to miss out on in-person time with their teachers next week. Again, it's, it's a very, very quick timeline, but those are my general thoughts about that. Okay, here again, just, you know, a general timeline. You know, we would not be surveying parents about our in-person model. A very important survey would be for parents in terms of transportation. You know, we need to help out Lisa, make sure we have accurate as possible information. And how would I do that? I am assuming, and I could, you know, we know what assume can do sometimes, that, you know, students who are currently in person one day per week, or sending their, parents who are sending their children into the building, I'm assuming that those students would continue to be a part of our in-person model during two, you know, during a two-day-per-week model. to be a part of our in-person model during two, you know, during a two-day-per-week model. Staff would need to be hired. Again, with the change, we've had three exceptional people come in and help us out. They've done a remarkable job, but going to a four-day model, we would need, all teachers would be in on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and on Wednesdays for targeted learners. We would need staff to cover our remote teachers in person in the building, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. That's worked really well with our current model, where I've been able to shift people because those staff have covered, say, 5th or 6th grade teachers on Monday and Tuesday, then they cover the in-person instruction for 7th and 8th grade on Thursdays and Fridays. And again, that's worked really well, but now we would have teachers in all four of those days, so we would need additional staff to cover those classrooms. ASAP is the key word here. I mean, as soon as possible, those positions have been posted, and as soon as we start to get applicants, you know, we'll start to talk to people right away. Once an applicant puts in their resume, or cover letter, or fills out an app, I get, and it's completed, I get that instantly, as well as Bill Sullivan does, so it's, you know, we'll work through that in real time. As soon as we get an applicant that we're interested in, we'll reach out to them within 24 hours, if not that day. Yes, Denise?
So, a question about this. If in fact you do not, you are not able to hire the people in time, what does that mean? Does that mean you have another way of finding staff to cover, or is that kind of, getting back to my question of, is that a good enough reason to ask for more time?
It's called all hands on deck. It's really that simple. Myself, or whoever's available, will cover classrooms to cover for those remote teachers to make sure that, you know, those classrooms are covered. When I say all hands on deck, that means anybody that's available to cover, from me, other administrators, secretaries who have experience, who have done things like this in emergency in the past, so, again, whoever's there working and can cover a classroom, that's who'll be covering it, so. Get a little bit about teacher prep, meeting time. You know, we need to plan for some shifts, in terms of what, you know, the schedule would look like a little bit different. I mean, again, I always consult with my task force when we make shifts like this, you know, a great group of teachers who advise me on what will work and some challenges, you know, talking about very, very important things like advisory, you know, our Bobcat times. You know, again, we'll all schedule, they don't know it yet, but I'll have a meeting scheduled for, you know, Monday afternoon to meet with that group, and we'll get to work. It's a great group of people. That's it. Pretty short, but I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Can you do it by the 8th?
It's going to be a challenge, Tom, but, you know, I know my staff, we're, you know, always up to challenges.
To do it by the 8th, Tom, you, the board would have to take action this evening.
Yeah, I know that. Even assuming that, I was.
Even assuming, man.
I had some people freaked out, but I like challenges. I know my staff are up to the task. I mean, I prefer the 15th, but, you know, the governor has spoken, it's kind of like Tax Day. It's due, and he expects us to be ready for the 8th, and we'll get to work and make it happen for our students.
Denise, go ahead.
So, I want to thank you again, as Dr. Morris did. I think this was just incredibly insensitive of the governor to put this out the day before February vacation, not only for administrators such as yourself that then have to spend all this time on this plan, but teachers that have been working incredibly hard all year, having a well-deserved vacation week, and I'm sure that they are now spending their vacation week, because this is a major shift. And they have to plan what they're going to do, you know, okay, I've got in-person days, but now there's more asynchronous time. And I just think it's horrible that on such a short timeframe, the governor really should have allowed more time. That's just my opinion, my opinion. But given all of that, and I, first of all, completely support you if you think Monday and Thursday are the better in-person days, and I'm fully in support of that. I am thinking that perhaps we could say, yes, go forward with this, but perhaps, in sort of a back pocket, if we do not have the staff hired that you need, that perhaps we could authorize Dr. Morris to ask for an, at least a one-week time extension in that situation. I don't know if we can make that as part of our, you know, motion or what have you, but that's how I guess I would prefer to proceed and say, yes, if we can do it on the 8th, if we can get it done, do what needs to be done, yes, go forward with the 8th, but have it be a possibility that if we just can't make it work, that we ask for an extension.
Yeah, just a quick comment on that. I mean, it's like going from 0 to 60 real quick. I feel for my staff, that that will be a challenge, but again, I know these people and what they can do. I think it's also a challenge, will be a challenge for some families, too, meaning my parents. I mean, that's a key component, too. I think this is a dramatic and significant shift for them. Dr. Morris knows when I email my staff, trying to get some kind of basic information out to them on Friday. I didn't even have the governor's order, we didn't have it yet to read. So I did have like a staff meeting Friday, you know, again, very not typical for me or my style to have a staff meeting on the Friday before break, with the exception of saying, you know, keep up the good work and enjoy your break. We met on Friday, and again, we're just, we're doing a lot of this stuff in real time. I can't emphasize enough, but also, again, just back to parents, I mean, I think this is going to be a significant shift for many families as well. So that's why, that's another reason why I wish we had a little bit more time, particularly maybe the 15th, for those types of shifts that need to take place in homes.
We already comply with the spirit of the order, arguably. The governor's order was, as I understand it, the intent was to get schools that were fully remote, that weren't dedicated to hybrid options, back in school. And so, you know, when I'm thinking about this, it's sort of in three categories. There's the must we comply with the order, and that's what we started with. There's the should we comply with the order, and there's a can we comply with the order. And I think these are related, but keeping them distinct is helpful. So Denise, like the can we, can we hire enough staff? Given that we still have vacancies, I believe, in hiring for the high school, what, does that, does that break? But I think we should spend some time thinking about the should we. When we talked about this in November, December last year, this was an option, and we chose to not do this model because of the increase of asynchronous time. So if there is, if we're, when we're weighing the models, one of the things that has changed is that the high school has implemented a teacher-choice model that allows for concurrent teaching. Now, I was impressed, Jay, the model that you've put forward here does allow for this blended instruction where, for all classes, unlike the current model, a core teacher could, could have both students in person and remotely at the same time. But depending on teachers' choices, the, this model still could lead to potentially less asynchronous time. So if, you know, if they chose to teach fully concurrently, it might lead to more synchronous time, or it could be a lot, there could be more asynchronous time of three days, right, depending on how the teachers choose. We decided last year that the one-day model was best because we didn't want 60% of the days to be asynchronous or mostly asynchronous. So I just think that, I mean, then the 5th grade model is its own beast, where there'd be more asynchronous time in any case, that's its own discussion. But I think before we think about the, you know, the can we, and the, that we should think about the should we, is this really better? And I guess a question for you, Jay, is, like, what do you think? Do you have a sense of what your teachers think? In terms of, in the abstract, is this two-day model more effective in, you know, academically, social, emotional learning in all ways than the one day?
Honestly, UC, we haven't had a large discussion about that, just because this came so fast with the governor's order. So I mean, my teachers love to have the kids at the building, so I think that the first reaction is, do my teachers want to see kids more in person? Absolutely. Some of these other challenges, scheduling and planning and all those things, that's why I paused a little bit, like, when Tom said that to me, because I can hear Todd Allen's voice in my head at times. He always reminds me, Jay, you know, just make sure we can do this type of stuff, because I always, you know, I like challenges, you know, particularly when people say, oh, you know, this is going to be really hard to do, you know. People like me and Bill Sullivan, Andrea Beneskevich, you know, we want to be up to the challenge and do what's best for students, of course, but, you know, it makes me a little leery in terms of thinking about making this happen for the 8th, but again, I'm confident we'll do whatever it takes to make it happen. And again, I do miss having that collaboration with my teachers, like, to talk some of this stuff through. I mean, again, we just talked about it. Again, when I say talked, I kind of shared some general information with them on Friday. I, any questions? I think they were, I won't say shocked, but surprised, they're surprised like everyone else with all this.
Yeah, and I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because this is so, this was just thrust on us at such a late moment. But collectively, we agreed on the one-day model after looking at several options because of the, we thought that that was the least bad model for the, for the kids.
Right.
And the only thing that's changed, other than the governor's executive order, is that maybe there would be a blended model, a blended instruction choice that teachers could have. But if many of them, you think, might not choose that, then, you know, then I guess I just wonder what has changed since the fall, that we would choose to either think that this is a better model, or that we would go forward without some sort of pushback for a subpar model.
Right. Yeah, honestly, again, I can't emphasize enough, we haven't talked about it, you know, at all. We were very happy with how things were going, enthusiastic and positive, but we haven't really had the time to digest it and really kind of talk about it. But again, I'm always very confident, my teachers, they always want to do what's best for the kids. We just haven't really mapped that out and talked about it, what this new model would bring and what it would look like. But again, I know my teachers, they, you know, they want to see kids in classrooms. They want them in person.
So I mean, we'd have options. We could say, we're just not going to comply, and see what happens. We could say, we're going to push for the 8th, and, you know, if some catastrophe happened, we would ask for an extension, or we could ask for, even though it sounds like there's not an official process for asking for an extension. I guess my feeling would be we should push for the 8th. If something means that we can't do it by the 8th, we'll, we'll push, you know, we'll ask to extend it to the 15th. I think it's the governor's order. I don't think, I think defying it makes no sense to me. I would not support defying it. So, and I think if we push towards the 8th, we'll be farther along, so, you know, I think having that terrible deadline will get us closer to getting it ready than if we just extend it. So that's, that's my feeling.
Could I ask, Tom, if you see a difference between defying and appealing?
Well, defying, defying puts the district at risk.
No, I understand, but I wasn't, I was suggesting defying. I was suggesting appealing.
But you're bringing it up. I mean, our, we have to protect the district, that, that's part of our job.
Right, it's just, it had gone from pushback to defy, and that was not what I said.
Defying and appealing are different, but appealing, as Dr. Morris says, you're talking about something that's going to be extremely expensive to the district, no assurance that it's going to be successful.
I didn't mean legally appealing either, just simply asking for an exemption, or, you know, I mean, I think we should talk about, before we talk about next steps, let's decide, is this model superior for our kids or not?
Yeah. So, I mean, this is the story of COVID, and it kind of feels like Groundhog Day, Jay, coming back here and doing this again, but, but, I mean, that, the story of COVID is, there's been rapid changes that we've been forced to undergo, whether it be March or now. And so, you know, when I look at this, really, when the governor hands down the order, he's laid the floor, and it's like, so the question really for us is, how do we work best within the confines or the constrictions that the governor has done? And so, I think the most obvious thing for us is the discussion should shift to, really, the instruction. You know, what is the most effective instruction that we can do? And I think, you know, we could look to appealing or pushing down, I mean, who knows about hiring these three paras or whatever you need? I mean, you've said it, it's going to be all hands on deck, and it's going to be kind of a crazy push, but the thing about it is, once we do it, it gives us an opportunity to adapt.
Right.
And I think the focus going, and this very well, more changes may come down the road. We don't know to predict it, but I think, in my mind, the, as we focus on effective instruction, and what really should happen as these models are coming forward, is the voices of the teachers that are doing this should be coming up to you guys, and then that should be coming up to us, and that's, that drives the changes that we're doing. And so that allows the district to have some control of its own fate, rather than being dependent and reacting to outside forces. And I think, you know, we've gone through, you know, over half a year of teachers working, and so that's the kind of the missing component right now, is what have we learned? How do we make it more effective, and what does staff need in terms of, of time? And I think everything we've learned thus far is that the professional development and planning phase of this is going to be absolutely critical. I mean, I keep, people keep talking about concurrent learning, but it's like, it's not, just sticking a camera on the side of your classroom is not going to get it done. And that's not where we're headed. So, really, the focus is, I would suggest we do this the 8th, try to make it happen. It's going to be crazy, but that we begin to then work forward to like, what is the instructional needs of each of these schools, and bring that forward so that we, as a board, can begin to adapt or provide support to it.
I would add too, state, state gives us mandates all the time. This is just another mandate. We might not like the timing, may not like the decision, but it is what it is. We can argue, we have no control over it. So if the mandate is do it by the 8th, we do it by the 8th. And if it's, there's a, there has to be a really good reason not to go, to go back. And we also have a lot of parents that want kids in more. Brinkton is tough, and I'll give it to Jay. If he pulls this off, he's a hero in my, he's already a hero in my eyes, but he's a bigger hero. He gets a cape now, I guess, he gets a, so, but I just wanted to keep that in mind.
The other thing I want to point out is something that Denise started off with, which is there already is precedent for exceptions. We know of at least one. So I don't think we should handcuff ourselves in our thinking in terms of what our options Ultimately, I think, you know, we don't need to be fighting against the tide. This is a reality, we do need to adapt. And in some ways, it is, it is consistent with our goal all along, which is to bring the kids in more. As UC said, my, my concern is the sacrifice of, and maybe you could speak a little more specifically about it, you know, the sacrifice of synchronous for asynchronous time in order to allow for kids to be more in person. Can you talk more specifically about the current model and how that would change the proportion of synchronous to asynchronous?
Absolutely. Again, currently, you know, in terms of asynchronous time, when the students are in person that one day, that at least they get, they get two synchronous days with their teachers, at least. So this model shift would put that at three asynchronous days. And I want to be clear, no one's a fan of asynchronous time. My teachers, me, parents, you know, students, but the reality is, you know, when the teachers are in the building, they can't be at two places, you know, kind of at one time, you know, in current models. So that, that is a big shift, Dan, definitely, and it's, none of us are a fan of that at all, but that's, you know, that's, that's a change, for sure.
It's, it's hard to believe we've been at this two and a half weeks short of a year now. Sometimes it feels like it's just been a few months, time flies, sometimes it feels like it's been, I don't know, three or four, or five or 10 years. Yeah, yeah. There are some really significant reasons why we didn't go this way in, in November, and I don't need to reiterate those. But when we look at what we would have with students in school two days, we're going to have in-school classes that are much smaller than when schools are at full capacity. And in the schedule that you presented, all four core, core classes meet each of the in-school days. So teachers are going to see their students a lot more often with really small class sizes, which is, you know, normally, in other circumstances, that would be a great thing, right? All other things being equal. So, we also have two Bobcat times each of those days. So, we also have two Bobcat times each of those days. And so, I, I really wonder that given all of that infrastructure opportunity that's built into the two in-person days, which is two more days a week in person than we had prior to, just a few weeks ago, really, a month ago, do we really still need Wednesdays to be dedicated to targeted learners and professional development? And I think that's an opportunity for us to add a full day of synchronous learning where you have your full team together back into the schedule. And I really have a hard time supporting a model that takes us down to 40% essentially for our middle school students.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great point, Michael. You know, when we think about a Monday, again, with five, six, seven and eight, we're talking about 50% of the students. So that's why we would have those, you know, class sizes of, say, 10 students in those classrooms. Wednesdays in terms of the targeted learning days, I think this is going to be a very significant shift for special education scheduling when those students are in or receiving direct services. So when I talk about targeted learning on Wednesdays, I think that's when we're going to really need to have direct special education services for students coming into the building. That's something, again, Andrea Beneskevich and I briefly talked about Friday, but we need, we would need to make some scheduling shifts for, again, I would envision the majority, if not all, the targeted learning that's going to happen on Wednesdays is for students that need specific services on those days.
And I know we, we've said before, we don't want to armchair quarterback, micromanage the models. You do still have two fully remote days to do that, though.
Yeah, you're correct.
So.
It's just, those, those teacher schedules are going to be different. I mean, some things where they might have been remote, doing it synchronously online. And this could be a positive thing, some of those services could shift to more in-person. So that's, you know, that, that is a positive. But again, I think services like that, it's very complicated to schedule those grades five through eight. So I think of like two speech and language pathologists that we have who do great work, but they're scheduled across grades five through eight. So, I can only imagine, I haven't spoken to them, but I'm sure those types of schedule shifts will, they'll figure it out, but it'll be a big challenge. So.
Denise, and then UC?
So the only thing I'll say is for people watching at home, and if they really end up not liking this, like, please don't just write letters to us, like, write to the governor because, you know, it's ironic that for all this, like, local control, I mean, I shouldn't get into all the politics, but, you know, to turn around and then come down with this kind of order of one size fits all, because that's what it is. It's a one size fits all. So, for folks out there, if it, hopefully this works and it, it goes beautifully and it runs really well, but if it doesn't, like, please write to the governor, not just us.
And Denise, I, I think that's a really good point, that it's voters, that it's our citizens that are writing to the governor. And I would like to see that paired with our own proactive, not reactive if it ends up not working, but proactive, just a first step to say, we meet the, the spirit of what you're trying to do. We have been pushing thoughtfully for hybrid models and this is the best for, that we've believed for our community. And then if you also have community members who are writing in, you know, that's where you don't have the jarring of, of a quick transition and then being able to switch back. You know, it's, it's what, 15 days if we, a, a hybrid student would have the option of, with 15 more days in person? Is it really worth all of this for that? You know, you think about the fifth graders. Fifth graders, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they're, they're synchronous with their teachers all day. And then they have the option of half a day in person on Wednesday. This is shifting to three almost full days of asynchronous. And even if it breaks even for our hybrid kids, this is nothing but loss for the remote kids, right? Because they lose a day without even, a synchronous day with, without even gaining anything. So, I agree that, you know, we have such active community members. And so if we feel that this is a, if this is not in the, the best interests of our students, then, you know, let's put together a thoughtful case and if it is supported by the very people that he's trying to, you know, he's, he's, he's reacting to families saying that they want their kids back at school. If our families are able to support that appeal, then we might have a chance.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking, please, I'm not talking about an appeal, I just want to make that clear. I'm just saying that we go forward. I, I agree that it's an order, we need to do our best and, and go with it as best we can. And I do hope that we can pull it off and it goes well, but I'm just saying, knowing, knowing the community and what we've heard so far is chances are there will be families who are not happy with the choice. And, and my point is simply that our hands are now tied. It's not, I mean, before people could say, you're not doing this and you're not doing that, and, and the answer was, you're right, we're not. So, you know, we had to take the responsibility, but in this situation, it's like, it really does tie our hands. And that was only my point. I, I wasn't advocating for any sort of, you know, like dissent or, or anything like that as far as the order goes.
Well, we're just gonna, I mean, I hate to be, we're just going to have to adapt. That's just how it works. I hate to be pragmatic about this. It's like, everyone's saying, well, this is not going to work and, and, I mean, again, I, I hate to sound like a broken record, but you're going to go through this incredible push to do this. And the real question is, you know, instead of me sitting here and saying, can you do this or can you do that? I think the preferred model for me would be like, as your staff is beginning to work through the difficulties of the asynchronous and the limitations, that you'll come forward with recommendations, these are the changes we think we can do to make it better.
Right.
And I know it's really hard to pivot. I mean, that's one of the biggest lessons we've learned during COVID, but I think the most important lesson that we're learning is that it's the, the development of your instruction to adapt to the limitations. And so, that's what we, that's going to be what we have to use to go forward. We will adapt to this and we'll adapt as we move towards full person instruction, but, I mean, it is what it is. Let's, let's, that, that's why it's so important that, that, that professional development time and the planning time is built in so that we give staff the ability to adapt and to bring their ideas forward.
Right. Again, I think another example, for example, would be on Wednesdays, okay? So say we have a student coming in, a fifth or sixth grader on Wednesday mornings during that targeted learning time. I can clearly see that we would have some of those students stay for the entire day, not leave at 11:15 because they needed to get maybe some specific extra help with someone in the building. So, again, that's something Andrea and I briefly talked about Friday when we talked about, because, again, I can't emphasize, that, that's going to be a big loss for some kids because they had the in-person day, then they were coming in at least a couple full days per week in, you know, with staff in the building. But, you know, we'll quickly need to figure things out and we're going, I promise you, we'll, we'll problem solve on the fly and make sure we solve those problems to meet the needs of our student needs.
I mean, again, I hate to be like the Groundhog Day thing, the analogy.
Yeah.
But if I came here and in April and asked you the same question, you're going to be far, 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 farther along or far different in terms of what you're telling me than you are now. And I mean, again, it's, it's not great that this has happened, but again, it is what it is and we'll have to adapt to it.
Yeah.
It's taking the fifth graders from five synchronous days to two synchronous days. And why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we take a step to see if, you know, to appeal, to, to, to write a letter explaining why we chose the models that we did?
So, couldn't we have two parallel efforts?
Yeah.
That target the...
We just lost the signal.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
It's just a laptop. That, so, one track would be, we do our very best to meet the deadline. But the second track would be, for reasons we've articulated here, this doesn't meet the needs of our students. This is not consistent for the following reasons with what we have learned is best for our students, our teachers, our families. Therefore, you know, what are, and the other thing is, I, I think, you know, what I, filling in the blanks, I think what I heard is that at the, at the state level, there's not yet a lot of thought given to how the appeals process works, what sorts of, what sorts of exceptions are they comfortable with? And there seems to be a lot of that being worked out. Another...
I would disagree with that category, that, that description, Dan. There is no process going on and conquered, creating an appeal process. It's, each district writes a letter and makes their case if they want to make a case.
So I just wonder if there's going to be, this is, the timeframe is the issue here. This is really being forced through in a really unreasonable timeframe. So, will there be some groundswell from districts that will result in some adaptation at the state level that might allow for some flexibility on this? Again, I don't think we have the luxury of just waiting and finding out. We, we do have to, I feel we have to do our best to meet the deadline. But for obvious reasons, the sacrifices are tremendous. And it really changes a lot of the decisions that we've made previously. So, one other, just in terms of district-wide, Dr. Morris, have you had an opportunity to think through, you know, how this would impact based on transportation? How might this impact our elementaries doing the AM PM model and/or the high school? I mean, a lot of moving parts there.
Yeah, so, again, everything happened on Friday. We brought, Jay and I and Todd brought Lisa into the conversation. We gave her the, the time of day. We made sure that it didn't conflict with the elementaries and we made sure it didn't conflict with the high school. So the advantage that we have right now is that the number of high school kids who have, who have articulated to, to the principal that they want to come to school is just a little bit over half, 58%. And then if you figure juniors and seniors will drive themselves largely, that the impact on transportation of the high school is, is modest compared to the impact that it'll have at the middle school. But having said that, this is why Jay put in his PowerPoint, the, the need to survey our parents in terms of wanting transportation, because right now we're running four buses shy of a full fleet and we're keeping our numbers at 26. You know, the, the issue, we may have to come back and, and I haven't talked to Lisa about this because we don't have the data, but we may have to say to parents, we can't keep it at 26, you know, because, you know, the number of people who want transportation is, is greater than that. That's, that's a concern for me because then we'll be talking about how we're changing our COVID-19 plan to accommodate need. But I don't have that data to share with you, Dan. We won't know that until we reach out to the middle school parents. So the, the, the question in terms of can we do both is, of course we can. I mean, we can write a letter and we have some really good reasons. Here's my thought, though. When we talk about our parents, we can't really be talking about, we're shooting for the eighth, but maybe it'll be the 15th. Because they have plans to make too. And one of the, one of the biggest complaints I get from parents, and rightfully so, is when we turn on a dime, and this is what Jay was referring to, they need time to change their family lives. And, you know, what the governor has done here is turned their world upside down. They all are, well, mostly are aware of the governor's. I, I did send out a communication last Friday and people are just waiting for the decision of this body so they can make finite plans. So, if the goal is to hit the eighth, then Jay's given us a plan that we can get to the eighth and is the goal to, to appeal to see what? Are we asking for an appeal from the executive order completely? Are we asking for a week's delay? What is it that I'm, you know, I don't know what I'm asking yet because you guys haven't kind of got there yet.
Right.
I am putting forward that we ask for an appeal for, an exemption for the middle school, that we share the reasons that we came to, to the original decision and what the loss in instructional time, synchronous instructional time would mean at various levels. I also wonder if we could survey parents with a quick turnaround, say, due Tuesday after folks get back from vacation, really laying out in detail, not in a biased way, but in a very concrete way, what the choice is between and ask them which they would prefer. And if it comes back the way I think it would, then that becomes extra information to share as part of the appeal. And I agree that we go ahead with the, the planning if, if that is, if that is denied.
So that means we would not meet the eighth deadline of the eighth?
I think you just said we wouldn't be, we'd shoot for the eighth, but put the appeal in to see if we can convince them that this isn't a good idea for us.
And I understand that our families are frustrated with, you know, with, with transition on a dime. I think there is, there's an excuse at this point and that it's important enough that, that would be, that that sort of dual-pronged process, even with less certainty, would be supported.
Is that... I think that's right. I mean, I, I think it has to be concise. And, you know, I, I think the difference, I take your point, Dr. Morris, that, you know, when we do things in very short order, very short turnaround, it reasonably is received by many with a degree of frustration. But this is a, this is a circumstance not of our creating. So, I guess I feel like we have an obligation to advocate for what we have found to work best for our district. And if we don't, if we don't explain to the governor why we feel a different model works better, then we haven't, we haven't at least tried. And so, it, you know, for that fundamental reason, I think, I think, I feel obligated to advocate for that ask, right?
I think if you're going to ask that, though, you have to come back with a plan that works better, to show them that this is our plan that works better than the plan you're forcing us into, and we don't have that plan.
What do you mean, Brian?
Well...
If you're telling me this is not the plan that works for our kids, then what is the plan that works for our kids?
The one we adopted.
Yeah.
It's, it really, for me, it really comes down...
Because for a lot of people, it's not a good plan.
And I, and I take your point and that is something that's been abundantly clear. For me, it's all about that loss of synchronous instruction. You know, our kids are already so strained and our teachers are already so strained at this point. I really worry about the impacts of that, that tremendous burden of asynchronous, you know, learning and how it's going to impact the outcomes. You know, we're already struggling to keep them current and keep them on pace with, you know, competencies. You know, we're losing ground. I mean, I think that's...
We're losing, yeah, but I mean, the kids can also make the choice, they can switch and go in instead of being remote. If that, if that's a concern for them. You know, I mean, it's, a lot of parents want to be in more. I've heard more people that want, kids want to be in more than want to be in less. And what you're saying is keep it where it is now where they're not in much at all. That's what you're asking.
Well...
Because you said this is the best policy, the one that we're in right now, but it's not. It's not the best policy.
Well, until, until situations change with the pandemic, I mean, my hope has been all along that we have some lessening of social distancing, we have increased vaccinations, we, we don't have to take the precautions that are really restricting our ability to, to do what we normally would do, that we know works best. So, until that happens, we're, those, those restrictions are something we've tried to balance against, you know, what we know works best and what provides the best outcomes for our students.
When you talk about best outcomes, then we have a lot of kids in this district that are going into crisis because of their isolat, being isolated at home.
Right.
We know that, we...
I didn't say you didn't know that.
No, no, no.
I don't.
I know.
Let me finish, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me finish. Okay, there's a lot of kids in crisis.
Mm-hmm.
It's not getting any better, okay? It's getting actually exponentially worse. They need to be in and have contact with teachers. Teachers can see kids in crisis better than you and I can, okay? We need them in more. We're just have, you just don't like the fact that the governor is forcing it upon us. That's what I'm hearing here, is people just like the fact the governor's ordering us to do it. So what? Okay? It is what it is. You don't have control.
The timing, that we giving everybody one week to do this.
But it is what it is. You can complain all you want. It's the governor's order. We don't have control over it. We don't have much control over that as we do about the weather. We can't, we just got to work with it. If two fetus snow dumps on the ground, we get out with a shovel and we shovel. We got to do what we got to do to get back to normal.
Yeah.
So again, I, I, of course we're going to appeal. Why wouldn't you? It's like, I mean, we should make our case because we have a clear, we have clear concerns. I mean, if we didn't have concerns, we would have... I mean, if we didn't have concerns, we would have already approved this. I'm just pessimistic, but I think there's not, why, why wouldn't you do both tracks, obviously? I, I just want to make sure that we do the one that we're prob, I'm, I'm very pessimistic about the probability that we'll be successful. And I think, I think Brian's point is really well on where he says the governor is going to say, okay, what is your plan that meets the two days that does this? And we don't have one currently. So again, we'll appeal, we'll, I mean, I assume there will be multiple districts that will appeal because they're, they're struggling with the exact same thing. And then we'll plan for the other alternative. And I, I don't see why they're mutually exclusive. Let's just do both.
So, I mean, are we, I'm trying to think procedurally now.
Two different, two different votes.
Two motions. One, to move forward with the plan as presented with the deadline of March 8th. The second, to write a letter to the governor. But what is the letter going to say? I mean, or we, you know.
The letter is going to say that we looked at two-day options earlier. That, so number one, we are a district that has been moving with all due haste to hybrid models. We understand and are in line, in full agreement with the governor's intent to, to, to have in-person options for students in, you know, with, with the safety precautions needed. Number two, we looked at a variety of options that would make this possible. We've met it at the high school, we've met it at the elementary school. For the middle school model in particular, we came to a one-day model decision for these reasons. Because compared to the two-day model, there is more, there's more synchronous time, there's for, you know, for all of our kids. And that was something that was important to us and we learned from experience. And number three, the, if we are able to send out a survey, maybe you're right, Brian, maybe it's that the families will say, I would prefer two days in person despite three days asynchronous. When I hear people at the fifth grade level saying, my fifth grader's only getting a half a day and everybody else is getting more than that, the, I think of it as not, not having full understanding of why we came to that decision and what the alternative is. But if we in fact get our, our, our parents voting one way or the, the other, then we will be able to see how they choose.
Surveys, we've surveyed so much that people are overloaded with surveys and obviously they probably won't even answer anymore at this point because they know we're not going to follow whatever, whatever comes back. That's the attitude that's out there. That's the belief that's out there in the general public, that we're not looking at, we're not listening to the surveys that come in. I think we are to an extent. But overall, I think they're not going to answer the survey because they probably feel that we're, we're going to do what we're going to do anyway. So we can survey all we want, but ultimately, we have a mandate from the governor.
Sure. And we are, you mean, we can't commit it?
If we could all discuss it and vote on it, that would be great. But we don't have that opportunity here to decide whether we're going to follow a governor's mandate or not.
So I'm wondering if we could have a motion to.
There's going to be two things that I need before we do that. I apologize for interrupting. One would be to do, again, for parents and staff, do the model that I talked about, the A through K Monday and Thursday.
Yes.
L through Z on Tuesday and Friday.
Yeah, that's better.
So that would be able to share that with parents, you know, Monday or whatever that looks like. The other one, when we talk about professional development for our staff, of course, we don't want to do it on this upcoming Monday, but Tuesday, we would lose a synchronous day for seventh and eighth grade students because I would allow my seventh and eighth grade teachers to do a PD day on that Tuesday. Again, the students would not lose out on in-person on that Thursday and Friday. And I would do the same thing for my fifth and sixth grade teachers for that Friday because keep in mind, sixth grade will be in-person on Monday and Tuesday and then Wednesday for fifth graders. So students would miss it on that. So that would, my plan again.
I think, to me, that would be up to you, how you.
Okay.
How you're going to schedule it.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday model that Jay proposed.
Okay, with the deadline of March 8th.
With the deadline of March 8th.
Moved by Al, second by Brian.
Could we have the other vote first?
No, let's do, let's do this.
No, they got a motion on the table.
Let's do this first.
So I'm, I'm going to vote against this. I can't support something that takes us down to a situation where we have essentially three full asynchronous days a week. I would prefer to wait, take some time to figure out a way to preserve three days a week of education and, and if needed, drag out to, you know, an additional week to implement.
Okay.
I would vote no if we did this now, but if we do the appeal vote first, I would support it as a backup.
So you're not going to withdraw, you know?
No, I mean, again, I, I completely understand what Michael is saying and, I mean, I hate this model. There's no, no other way. Educationally, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But, you know, again, I just keep coming back to Jay, you're going, we're going to have to adapt. I mean, the, we know what the limitations of the model are. We know, we've known what the limitations of the model are for a really long time and we haven't been able to address, I mean, in terms of writing an appeal, I think the central part is the CDC. For us to follow the CDC guidelines means we cannot, we suffer really catastrophic losses of educational time. But I think, you know, to be a broken record, that that's going to be our charge for the next few months, is how do we solve the riddle of this really bad model?
So further discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Five in favor, all opposed, two opposed, okay, that's done. So I think there's a second motion about the nature of the appeal. So you, you want to talk more about that or you kind of, you kind of laid it out, but when you come?
It's putting it in motion language. I guess the motion is to, to write an appeal to, to the governor saying, as we discussed, that we are complying with the spirit of the order and that moving to a two-day model would lead to a decrease, significant decrease in instructional quality for these reasons. I don't know if this should be part of the same motion, but we would also survey parents with.
I think that should be separate.
Different.
That's, that's procedure, that's.
Yeah.
That's outside the motion.
It could be either way. It's, your motion is your motion.
Well, I wouldn't support that because I think we've surveyed parents to death. So I, I think we should keep it separate because otherwise I'll vote against it.
Fair enough.
Okay, so do you want to make first motion to write the appeal? Okay, set?
Yes.
Al, second.
Moved by UC, second by Dan. Further discussion on that? So would you trust Dr. Mor, I'm sorry, I assume you'd want that done between, before the next board meeting, right?
Correct.
So could we trust, I'm trying to think, should we have the leadership team write the meeting?
No, I think we should just ask Dr. Morris to write the.
Just, I mean, Jim is, I'm quite certain that Jim is aware of the limitations of the models.
He's a good writer. I'll vouch for his writing ability.
I have all the major points. I wrote them down.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion in a, in a second. Are we ready to vote on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, all those opposed, one opposed, okay.
Sorry about that.
So the letter, we've authorized Dr. Morris to write that letter. Now, did you want to make a motion about a survey?
I did. I would motion that we survey families with details of the two models, the current model and the model that we would adopt due to the governor's order and ask them for their choice. I further, I guess this would be part of discussion, but I would want to see context by Dr. Morris in the, sort of the preamble for that survey. So describing the, you know, the executive order that the district is, I look to the discussion here, but either considering or filing an appeal. And was curious, would like to know family preferences, recognizing that we may not have a choice.
I think I would vote against this because I think it would seem to offer a choice to parents.
Yeah.
And I think it's unlikely, in my view, that the governor will give us that choice. And so I think it would create a false expectation.
My other concern is I'm not, I anticipate we won't have valuable data in, in, in the sense that a significant enough number of families will respond. Therefore, I don't know that it will be helpful in informing our appeal.
I could withdraw the survey. I do think that informing the community, you know, through a follow-up email to what you sent on Friday would be important and, you know, his, my understanding of his intent is that families are craving more in-person opportunities, that there are some districts that have not provided those opportunities and, you know, and therefore this mandate is required. If we, if our citizens, if our families are able to, to share that that is not the case, then that, you know, perhaps would be a stronger grounds for consideration of the appeal.
I mean, I, I just think that, you know, first of all, I think writing a, a letter out to the community explaining the situation is always a good thing. And I don't want to give them a false sense of hope, but I think what we should explain to them is the governor has mandated this, we have to do this model, we don't think the model is a very good model, we've asked for an appeal just because we think it's a bad model. And then the next step really is where do we go forward? And I think that's what most parents really want to know. Okay, you're throwing a hail Mary to try to overturn this appeal, but that, it's a hail Mary. What most parents want to know is, okay, you've identified this as a bad model, what are you going to do about it?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't say this to, I think if you're going out with a model, I think the idea is we're going to make this, do our, do our very best to make this work.
Well, that's what I mean.
Well, okay, I mean, well, the connotation is a little.
Well, what I'm trying to say is we realize that, I wouldn't say a bad model, I'd say we realize the limitations of these models, which are what we're addressing in the appeal. And what parents really know is, want to know is, what are we going to do going forward to address those limitations besides the appeal?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I would just say that we've been moving in a deliberate direction that, you know, we just recently went to one full day for sixth, seventh, and eighth. And that, you know, all along, and I, I understand that there are lots of folks that think we, you know, we're too cautious and all of this, but we've just tried to say, okay, let's, let's do this and see if we can handle this. Are the numbers not going to spike? Are we not going to, you know, be completely overloaded and, you know, and we've sort of just been trying to do it methodically. And yes, I know that people haven't agreed that we've gone that slowly, but I think that overall, you know, we haven't had, we've been able to maintain, our kids are learning. Yes, there's issues with mental health, I understand that. So we had, we have a plan. It's not like we haven't had a plan. Our plan all along has been, can we bring our students in person more? And we've worked on it and we have been getting there. And my hope is that as spring comes and hopefully teachers are getting vaccinated and things, maybe that will open up more opportunities. But I just, I just think that that's the plan. The plan is we've, we've added sixth, seventh, and eighth, one full day. We just barely did that. We can bear, you know, let's give it a few weeks to see how that works. I mean, I think if the governor hadn't stepped in, that's what we would have done. We would have said, how is this working? We would have reassessed in a, you know, in a, in a few weeks or a month or what have you, but we would have reassessed and said, okay, is it time now to move to, to more in-person time? Can we, can our system handle it? You know, is this worth it at this point? So I disagree that we don't have any plan. I just think.
I didn't say, that actually is not what I said at all. What I said is parents want to know what the plan is. And so when you tell them that you're appealing because the plan that we're being forced by the governor to appeal or to, to implement has significant limitations, what every parent's going to want to know is, what are you doing about those limitations? How are you adapting to it? So I'm not saying we don't have a plan. I'm saying parents want to really know how we're moving forward, how we're addressing the limitations. That's a different thing than saying, no, we don't have a plan.
The message I'd like to convey to the community is that, you know, we, we feel an obligation to advocate for the plan we've already adopted and sort of in, in general terms, lay out those reasons. There is, there is a tremendous benefit in bringing kids in more frequently. The, the issue is the trade-off, right? So there is an inherent, an inherent benefit in kids coming in for two days as opposed to one. But it's, the, the equation is not that simple. It's, we want parents to understand that the reason we haven't adopted that benefit is because we don't want to give up an inordinate amount of synchronous instruction. And also, whatever ends up happening, we are fully committed to making the most of whatever model we either choose or are forced to choose and, you know, doing absolutely everything we can to make it work as well as it can possibly work.
Yeah, I think.
That's great. And I can see why a survey would be both difficult to interpret the results and also would confuse the, the community. I do think that in the, the first paragraphs perhaps of Dr. Morris's email that's talking about the appeal, one sentence on, you know, letters to the governor could be sent here would, would be helpful before we switch to the bulk of the letter, which would be how we're moving forward.
Okay, so, so I assume there was not a second here motion, so, about the survey, so.
Sure, I withdraw.
Okay. Further comments? Very tough decision, very tough decision.
I mean, in my mind, again, I, I don't think this is going to be the last of these kind of things potentially that's going to hit us. And I think the lesson of COVID is that you have to be prepared for the next shoe to drop. And I think that really is what we need to look forward to is, as we move further into this semester and as we look towards the summer and specifically we look towards the fall, that we didn't, we don't get caught flat-footed, that we really do, we have adapted and we're, that when something happens, we can say, yes, we've reached into our stash and this is Plan Z that we're going to pull out. And so I think the hardest part about COVID is being ahead of the curve and not behind it. And, and, and it's just by its very nature, most people are going to be behind it.
Sometimes Plan B is more important than Plan A.
And because the model does allow for the blended instruction teacher choice, it's a little different from the high school because the, you know, the in-person kids aren't actually, it's easy, it's easier to simply focus on the kids in, in front of you and the, the other, it's, it's a different, it's a different model than the high school where it's less intuitive perhaps for the teachers to teach, to hit both kids, both sets of kids. We also heard in the concurrent teaching working group research that, that that approach was more, it was, it was easier, it was a better fit with older students who are able to both focus more on the lecture side and also to work independently. But if we are, as we are, moving forward with, with a two-day model where there is significant time that could be asynchronous and less used in other ways, I think it, Jay mentioned it in the presentation, but keeping the, the conversation going around these new models for blended instruction could really help as well.
Are there any comments? Public comment, the public is still not here. Just before we adjourn, the one obligation, there's a, by policy, we're required to have a board evaluation. And the time is short between now and the time the new board would take over, which I think would be the 17th. So I'm just, and I think what I'd like to is like send out a certain, you know, we're maybe can talk, decide tonight whether we could have like for maybe an hour, an hour and 15 minutes, hour and a half, on the 10th, the board evaluation. Because I don't, there's no way we could tack it on to the meeting in the third because that's a totally full agenda in the third. And I actually think this year, it's probably important that we do this. I mean, it's important every year that we do this, and this has been an extremely difficult year as a board. So I don't know how you folks feel about that. I don't see otherwise how we could do it in the time we have left.
And I just, I want to, based on what Wendy said, the election is not certified until And I just, I want to, based on what Wendy said, the election is not certified until the day after that. So, at that point-
So, we're still, this will still be the board.
And I will clarify that with Gordon tomorrow, Michael, but I believe that is the case.
Okay.
What is the board evaluation?
Each year, the board evaluates how, you know, how we've done in terms of our goals, in terms of how we've operated, what changes we make. For example, last year, you know, like unanimous consent, we hadn't done that before, and so that was a change that we came. There's been a lot of talk we've had about committee structure, do we want to change the committee structure? This year, we did a lot of short-term committees with tasks, how's that work? You know, those, those are the kinds of things, you know, how did the budget process work? What would we change on that? Those are the kinds of questions we would have. So, is that workable for the 10th? I hate to ask for an extra meeting, but I don't see how else we could do it.
I mean, man, the thought of adding another meeting is so painful, but I, I think, you know, my thought process to that is that, to add some structure to it, so maybe, I mean, send out some idea what people, write something up and come prepared, or share it is a better idea so that there's structure-
It's all part of the policy, you have procedures and the fill-out, so if this works-
There's a couple documents we usually send out.
Yeah, I mean, vaguely, I remember it, but it's, again, I think, you know, the hope of the evaluation, particularly this year, is like, what did we learn that will set us up as we move forward to next year? And I think we spend so much time on the superintendent's or the administrator's evaluation, but we really don't really self-reflect very much about what we're doing to be better. So, I think, in this year in particular, it's, it would be helpful.
Okay. So, 7 o'clock, say 7:00 to 8:30, no later than that, we won't go later than 8:30. So, I think that's it for tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Al, second by Brian, all in favor? We're adjourned.